Zara.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. Coram present, please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of a city council meeting, May 2nd, 2013.
I make the motion.
Second.
Questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications and petitions, citizens wish to be heard, not matters not listed on the agenda. Mr. Shaw Murray? If you'd step to the podium. Give your address.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the board. Unfortunately, I cannot consider myself a resident of the town. But I did want to take the opportunity to introduce myself because I'm a staffer from the office of State Representative Kathleen Willis. And I just started a couple of weeks ago. And part of my role in the office is as the representative is in Springfield and focusing on matters that I make myself available to all of the community organizations and levels of local government to be used as a resource in anything that I can do or look into in forming a partnership. I hope to be able to do that. So I hope that the residents of the town and the board and government consider the office of the 77th District State Representative to be also a tool and a resource for yourselves. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Yes, Alderman Wesley.
Could I just ask where the office is?
The office is located at 112 North Wolf Road in Northlake.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Bill Adler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Adler. I live at 188 North Central Avenue. Approximately a year and a half ago, I turned in a petition with 150 signatures in regards to quieting the train horn. There are quiet zones in many communities, as you know, such as Elmhurst, Philip Park, Hinsdale, Carol Stream, Niles, Arlington Heights, and Naperville. I witnessed all of these personally. The noise from the trains have gotten worse. I talked to a lot of my neighbors with this issue in which some of them are here tonight in support. We need to take this seriously, which I know you are. Health issues are starting to become an issue with people getting woken up in the middle of the night. Just last night alone, I was, went to bed about 10 o'clock and I got up at 4:00, but between the 10 and 4:00, there were six trains that came through just blasting the horns. And it's ridiculous, you know? So anyway, I'm coming forward with my neighbors and forming a committee and working with Alderman Jacob and Alderman Lozara. I would like to invite the city council to help, you know, helping the residents of Wooddale to find a viable, affordable solution to an annoying problem. With talks of a memory care facility that's going to be built for the senior population right along tracks, you know, they may have here so good, but, sorry. The redevelopment of the downtown is important. This has to be a key issue. If you want people to sit outside enjoying local restaurants and shops, we need to attract people, you know, to live here. Give them the city of Wooddale a chance to collect more tax revenue as a result. You know, I think that's a win-win situation. And that's all I have to say, but thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, the city council, for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Alderman Lozara, you had your hand up.
Yes, Mayor, what committee should this go to?
Public Health and Safety.
Can we get that on that committee? Do you need a motion?
No, we're for them.
Chairman says sure. That's two.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Alderman Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, as we made our trip down Springfield, we did ask a couple of the mayors that were down there, like Bensonville, and we had a conversation with Itasca on it. And they were looking into doing a quiet zone, at least in Bensonville, and Itasca was possibly looking at that too. So in my conversation with those two mayors down this week, a couple of days ago here, we talked about, and I guess I would ask that this council or someone outreach to those mayors and those other towns and see where we could go to do it. And if I am mistaken, Mayor, when we're doing the intersections, construction, we already are putting those quad gates in that it is required for the noise, for a quiet zone. I believe that's in our project to do those quad gates there. So I would look, that I would try work with the other mayors on trying to do it all together and maybe go in on, if there's grant money available down in Springfield or Washington DC, if we put three towns on a grant, I think that might look a little better than us going single loan on this. So I would suggest that let's start gaining more conversation with the two towns that are considering that too. So I would ask that we look into that too, Mayor.
No problem. Alderman Jacobs, you had your hand up also?
I was going to basically say the same thing that Roy said, or, I'm sorry, Eugene said. But I would like to just find out from Jeff, you know, how soon would this get onto the agenda?
Mr. Mermish.
We've got a pretty heavy agenda coming up with Algen O'Hare and some PZB items, a little Cota study, Euler study. Sometime this summer, I'd have to go back and talk with staff, figure it out at a staff meeting, so I can't really commit. Just, I would think sometime in the summer months, we will get it on a committee for sure. Within the next couple of weeks, definitely not, but sometime within the summer.
I think we can, not the next committee, but I think we should push it to-
Probably June.
Okay. And then just one other thing I'd like to say is Jeff did, I did talk to Jeff about this earlier during the week and he had the chief look into some things, and it sounds like it might even be a little less expensive now to do something like this versus two years ago.
Alderman Sizmarsky, have you?
Yeah, if I don't know if you remember, I did go after this in 2011 and went after the mayor and the couple trustees from Bensonville, which seemed to go nowhere, fell to the wayside. I don't know why they're having a change of heart, but maybe it's new trustees. But I would highly advise we wait until that intersection of Wooddale and Irving gets taken care of to see what rating we get because that person that died on Ash and Potter, the suicide, that put us in a bad rating there also. So, once they upgrade the intersection of Irving and Wooddale, we'll probably get a better rating and they'll probably do that on their own.
Get a question about that. I mean-
Go ahead.
I would, it was 500 feet past the crossing, east of the crossing. I did see that. That doesn't mean the guy didn't cross the crossing. He probably crossed over the tracks if he's that far away. So I mean, what difference does it make? You know, I mean, I know they have their protocols and stuff, but-
Right.
To mention it does that- The chief will respond to that.
I was just going to mention that, yeah, we did have a suicide over there, but there also was a train versus vehicle accident in 2008 or 2009. I'd have to look up the exact date.
Right, I was going to get to that. But Chief, would you elaborate on what needs to be done to that Ash and Potter to get that to become?
I think if it'd be fine, I could come back to a committee meeting, but we did do some additional research. Conditions may have changed since 2011, but I know over the last 15 years, the city has spent quite a bit of time looking at it. And in the past, the cost was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Certainly if, there's some, several restrictions from the length of the quiet zone, a minimum of a half a mile that might restrict us a little bit and some other things, but the, if with the Irving and Wooddale being upgraded and improved, there's a good chance that that would improve our rating, that it would be much cheaper for us to just do the supplemental safety measures at Ash Street. But, you know, if we go that route, it's going to start committing engineering resources to it, which is fine, but we'll certainly bring it back to a June committee meeting and have some preliminary information for you. And then if you guys want to proceed further, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. You had a follow-up, by the way?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I'm requesting, since it's going on agenda in June, could you or someone do an outreach to Itasca Mayor and their board and Bensonville and see if we could get that all in line? Sure we have all that info if they, I really seriously am interested.
The manager's going to take care of it. Thank you. Christopher Yon? Did I get the name right? I'm sorry, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm also here in support of Bill and the neighbors that are all suffering. It just, I just had a comment that it seems to me that if the leaders in Wooddale were as concerned with residents' quality of life as they are with corporate well-being, they would already be touting a plan for a railway quiet zone at Ash Avenue in addition to a corporate office neighborhood up on Thorndale. This is not a frivolous want we are talking about. This is a serious need that impacts all the homeowners that are really suffering. Many, many communities surrounding Wooddale have treated this with the gravity it deserves and have gotten it done. And I'm just really, really hopeful that we can accomplish this in Wooddale also. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wish to be heard? I have no written communiques. Mayor's report. Chief, you want to take us with the introduction of the officers, please? You guys can come right over here. Michael, right next to me.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to take a moment this evening to introduce our four most recent police officer hires. Their hiring was made possible after we had four retirements in 2011. They've all, in the last few months, completed their probation successfully. So we're hoping for long and prosperous careers with Wooddale. And I'm proud to report that they're off to a really nice start and they're doing a great job. Just some background on this group that we did hire. According to state statute, we have to do an eligibility list every two years. The last time we did this, we had over 700 applications. After those applications were processed and several hundred people showed up to the written test, about 175 made it onto our hiring, potential hiring list. And these four were right near the top and they rose to, rose to the top to be selected by our agency. One of the things, several of the things that they have to go through in addition to the written test are an oral interview, a background, psychological testing, polygraph testing, medical testing. And after they make it through all that, which weeds out several people, they go to a 12-week academy at the College of DuPage. And once they pass that and pass the state test, 12-week field training program. And then, once they've successfully completed that, they have about six more months of probation to prove that they can really handle the duties of a police officer. So, the year-long probation period really is substantial and it gives us a real good chance to make sure they're a good fit for us and for them, that they're a good fit for the city. So, Michael Danzy, the first one on my left, he grew up in Displanes. He attended Western Illinois University and received a bachelor's in history education and a master's degree from NIU. Prior to joining us, he was a full-time teacher. And with changing careers, he's made a big leap into law enforcement and he's doing a fine job. And right now, he's assigned to the day shift. And he also spends two to three days a week in the elementary and middle schools working with the teachers and the kids in those schools. Arthur Zlatnicki grew up in Chicago. He attended UIC where he earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. After college, he worked in the banking industry while he was looking for full-time law enforcement work. And right now, he is on the afternoon shift as a patrol officer. Evan Grant grew up in Warrenville. He has family father that's in law enforcement also. He graduated from Illinois State University with criminal justice. And prior to joining Wooddale, I know he was working some in the restaurant industry trying to find full-time employment with the police department and also working for the Naperville Park District Police Department. And finally, Alex Johnston, he grew up in Wheaton. He graduated from ISU where he also earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He worked several years as a part service assistant while pursuing schooling and his law enforcement career. And he's on the midnight shift along with Evan, with their duties as a patrol officer. So, just a short introduction, and believe me, they're go-getters. They're active on the street and they're already doing a very nice job to make, you know, make life better here in Wooddale. And we're glad to have them on board, so just wanted to introduce them to you, so.
Nothing. Next, we'd like to recognize the new fire chief. Alderman Wesley, you want to make the introduction, please?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce to us, to the council here, acting fire chief right now until Tommy officially retires, Timmy Roco. That is in the ordinance here, so, Timmy, welcome aboard. Right. You've been around.
Well, thank you very much. I wasn't really expecting this. I just came as a visitor, but it's greatly appreciated. Like I say, I've been around for a long time and I used to come to meetings before and I'm just back, that's all. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. I have one other, one other item. I need to make an appointment. I appoint, I need advice and consent, William Milano to the CDC Committee. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley? Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Abstain.
That passes. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item, just like to commend the council for a job well done for those that attended the latest DMC drive-down to those residents at home. A lot was accomplished. We were able to talk to your legislators. We were able to pound the pavement and make sure Wooddale's getting the necessary funding that's needed for our project specifically of interest where a lot of stormwater projects were flooding. And also assuring that we get our low-interest loan from the IEPA Low Interest Loan Program. So it was a successful event and we look for, I look forward to the event next year as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We have two items on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Now I entertain a motion to approve the two items on the agenda. One, an ordinance authorizing the city of Wooddale to execute a loan pursuant to the Water Pollution Control Loan Program for the improvement and construction of a wastewater treatment plant. Item number two, approval of council chambers audio upgrade and not to exceed amount of $34,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Committee Chairman reports planning and zoning, Alderman Woods?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Two items. Increase the B license, liquor license to two. I make a motion to deny.
Second.
Mr. Bond?
Technically, the motion would be a motion to not increase the Class B liquor licenses.
Okay, I'm in my motion.
Second or agree?
I agree.
Roco? Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
That's to deny.
Oh, to deny, huh? Yes.
Is he yes?
Yes.
Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Continue.
Okay. Approval to install temporary speed bumps on Prospect Avenue.
Yes.
Make the motion.
Okay.
You make that a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why is this, why did this not go back to committee after the design was drawn, the drawing? And why is it coming right back to council? We didn't have it back in committee.
Mr. Mermish.
I am not 100% sure, but I was pretty sure that the direction was bring it back to the next council with the drawings, the two drawings. I could be mistaken.
I think it was to go back to committee and then back to council.
We can certainly send it back to committee and look at the two drawings there. That's fine.
Well, no, it's here now and we already did it, but, I mean, I hope that stuff like this don't come right to council like it did.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion or a second? Alderman Lozara?
You know, can we, can we do this on subject of seeing what the drawings are? Because I think that's, that's my concern is, you know, are we using three humps or are you using four humps?
Mr. Mermish.
Yeah, I believe the direction was to put a pictorial representation in the packet with the different scenarios, either three humps or four humps and what standards that need to be out there. And then the council, they seemed interested in, in having a choice in which route they wanted to take. So, for direction, I think we need a number of, I don't know, Greg, if you want to speak to it real quick.
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I believe the direction I remembered was we were going to bring it back to council with this three or four and this should have been included in your packet on Friday. I do have color pictures here that, as a supplement to what was in your packet, if you want to take a look at those.
Alderman Sizmarsky, go ahead, you're next.
Try to amend the motion, maybe just put the three in with an option of fourth and see how they, see how they go. Since they are temporary.
Since they are temporary, they're not permanent structures. And we have three cuts down the amount of traffic or speed. Be able to add a fourth if needed.
Mike made the motion, correct? Mike, are you making the motion for three or four?
What does the board want? I mean, obviously it's out there to three or four, so should we put three with an option to put four? Which way does the council go?
Mr. Gallus, go ahead.
What you see before you this evening is two options. Both will work within the framework of the guidelines that have been provided to us by MUTCD, if you remember that acronym from last time, and ITE, which is Institute of Transportation Engineering. You're able to be somewhat flexible in terms of the spacing between speed humps. But the Institute of Transportation Engineering really recommends that you stay about 500 feet or less if you're going to slow traffic down. So what I've provided to you is a three-speed hump option that would be within that criteria. And if you're looking for a recommendation from your public works director, I would recommend three-speed humps because not only does it meet those requirements, but I think if I heard you last time during our conversation, there was some concern that maybe we have too many out there. Again, if you remember the context of this, I started with five in the conversation just for conversation purposes. But now that it's laid out, I feel through good engineering, we can accommodate three-speed humps and accomplish the goals here.
Mike, do you go along with the recommendation of three? Who was the second there on that? Art? Do you agree to that?
Did we change the motion to?
Three, to the recommendation of three.
You want the four?
No, Mike made the motion.
I made the motion.
Yeah.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem with this. Where's the speed bumps coming from and how much it's going to cost? Freshen my memory. Because there's no price and it ain't in the packet, I just love.
Tonight, what you have before you is three speed humps. They cost $400 each to put in, or to purchase. There'll be some staff, public works staff time to install them. Maybe two men, a couple hours. So you can add maybe a couple hundred dollars to that, so $600 per speed hump installed.
And we going, hey?
Follow-up?
Are we, and then we are putting these temporarily and then we're going to remove them and put them in storage?
Mr. Gallus.
Am I right?
The process was that we put them in for a year. We would allow the residents to experience them in their neighborhoods. Probably do some sort of petition later on to make sure that they want to go to a final speed hump in those locations. And then at that point, we would bring it back and give you the cost to proceed with that.
Are these-
Go ahead.
Speed, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, it's okay, don't worry about it.
Is there, are these speed bumps going to be able, you're saying we're going to put them down there for a year? Aren't we removing them for snow removal or are they remaining?
Of course, we have to.
So they won't be down a year then, the whole year?
Well, for the season.
Right, for the summer. Okay. So I want to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Mr. Gallus, I have one question. Are they, I talked to Alderman Woods. They do allow for sewage flow, or for stormwater flow, but are they solid from the outside of the gutter to the outside of the gutter?
Mr. Gallus.
Or is it separated in the middle?
They come in three pieces.
Right.
And so they'll give us about two feet on both sides of the curb.
Alderman Roy Wesley, have a second?
When we get a memo like this, I would really appreciate if the prices are in there too. So I know what is being spent.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you motion a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstain. Thank you. Public Works Committee, Alderman Lozara.
I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Sizmarsky.
Have no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Other Business, oh, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to be recognized. I'd like to have the senior citizen discount, water discount raised, if we can bring that to the appropriate committee.
That'd be Finance, correct? Okay. Finance, sure, Mike? All right. It'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Approval of list of bills, May 16, 2013, Alderman Sizmarsky?
Approval for list of bills in May 16, 2013, $200,000, or $269,103.18.
Is that your motion?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I have three questions on a list of bills this-
Okay.
On page number six.
Six.
Forest Engraving. For, you know what, cancel that one. I got my answer on that one.
Got that one, okay.
Page number nine, Lakota Group.
Nine?
Yes.
Hold on then.
Lakota Group.
Okay.
My question is, that bill, what have- Now, I know last year we talked about, the year before we talked about, and we had two people that were halfway through their course, and we decided to let them finish that out. And I did not think that we were approving it anymore. So this $2,000 that we have paid out on tuition, I thought we eliminated tuition. I know we eliminated our district budget for sure, but where did this other one? Because I remember, two years ago, we sat up here, and we had two people that were still in school, and they were halfway through their courses, and we choose to finish them out, and that was it. So all of a sudden, now I get a tuition bill being approved in front of me tonight. So I don't know if you remember that conversation, Mayor, that we had on that two years ago, three years ago?
I've been looking into it. I think it was three years ago, because that was when the state started to take away the income tax. That's when we made a lot of cuts. And, but then the following year, I don't recall us taking it out of the budget. Mr. Murmish.
Officially fiscal year 12, it was removed from the budget for, you know, fear of state cuts. Fiscal year 13, it was never removed from the budget with the, what this bill is, is left over from fiscal year 13. Fiscal year 14, which you just voted on a couple of months back, it's removed from that budget.